It is actually six, you ready? Okay, 6:31. Today is June 21st. And we have four directors out of the five. Tracy Hunter will be out today, is that correct Lori?
Yes.
Okay. So we have Director Rose, Vice President Benjamin Brewster, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Secretary of Treasury Harper and myself. And then Alan and Stephen.
We have a quorum.
And Lori. So we have a quorum of four directors. Okay. This is again Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One meeting. And I will go to the regular meeting agenda, call to order. We did that. We did announce a quorum. Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak during the item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. Lori, we have anybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jeff? Patrick? Chief? Okay. I guess you're acting town manager. Is that the title? Okay. Okay.
We have some questions for the town.
Okay. Reports and updates. Agenda item number one, staff reports. A, capital improvement projects. B, operations reports. C, finance reports. D, digital platform analytics. And E, 2022 annual drinking water quality report. Alan?
Good evening, directors. A few capital improvement project updates tonight. The FY 2023 water line project has begun. They started on Riviera Court. And as of today, they have the long services board, they have the bore of the main itself completed across Trophy Club Drive. And they were on the final stages of getting the temporary water line connected, installed, and ready for pressure testing and sampling. So we anticipate tomorrow, the next day, starting to work on getting those samples done and hopefully get on temporary water later this week so they can start beginning replacement of that water main. Once they get done with Riviera itself, then they plan to move on to Lee Court, then Sunset Drive and Berkshire Court, and lastly to Skyline Drive. Pump station improvement project, the design is 100% complete and we did receive final approval from TCQ on that project. It's currently being advertised for bid right now and more than likely we plan on bringing back an award for approval during next month's meeting. With that being said, with the timeline of certain shutdowns that we have, according to the schedule, we should be able to hit that timeline, hopefully in July, I'm sorry, January, February. And that way we can get those major shutdowns done during low flow time. The list station generator project, we're still waiting for a delivery date on those list station generators. Contractor has been on site and worked with staff a little bit on outlays and laying out the locations themselves, but we haven't started any underground work until we know when those generators are going to be delivered. Some of the electrical gear has been purchased and paid for and it's sitting there, ready to go. Wastewater improvements, the contractor had some equipment repairs, repairs issues this last month, so they were only able to get a few point repairs done. They have been back in town this week and starting to work again, so hopefully they can get the majority of that taken care of. List station improvement project that was completed last month, everything is working as it's intended and everything's cleaned up and ready to go. Another thing bring your attention is we do have our 2022 CCR report included in this packet and we do have the information sent out as part of the bill package and available online for people to review. So I want to bring that to your attention as well and can answer any questions y'all may have.
Anyone have anything on the finance reports or anything? No. On the water production report, I guess it's the water build, water, how we doing it compared to prior years? Looks like we're kind of off from last year, so I guess last year was a little higher.
Our average so far has been a little bit lower this year compared to last, but it's not much. Actually, last May, we pumped an average of 3.325. In this month, we're at 3.125.
Okay. When we look at these reports, and this just for the public, and you see water build versus water pumped, and you see a variance, could you just explain that real quick?
You talking about, let's see, yeah, whenever there's a water pump and you, your water pump versus water build, that's technically your water loss. So when you calculate that number, you're trying to keep that number as close to zero as possible. Water loss includes dead end flushing, leaks that are unknown or we're unaware of. Most systems shoot for a 10% water loss, so typically we're ranging below 10%.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Any questions for the staff on the reports? I see none, we're gonna move on. Agenda item two, regular session. Consider an act, an act to approve May 17th, 2023 meeting minutes. Were there any changes Lori?
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, did you have any changes?
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 17th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 17th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Okay, I have a motion by Secretary of Treasury Harper. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Vice President Ben Brewster. Okay, don't have any questions, I see none. All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous? Okay. Moving on to agenda item three, receive update from Strategic Committee. That's myself and Secretary Harper. Got my little paper here. We had a meeting on June 1st, 2023, and the consultant, Chris Eckert from NewGen was present, Becky Schaefer, NewGen, Chris Conley, Kim Lee, Kim Lee and Horn. For the mud, it was Alan and myself. Due to communication issues, I believe Doug Harper was absent, is that correct?
That's correct.
Trophy Club, Jeff Beach was present, Steve Flynn, both council members, Patrick Arata, acting town manager, and Dennis Sheridan was absent. Westlake Town Manager Wade Carroll was in attendance, the mayor Sean Kilbride was absent. Item number, or talking agenda one, the consultants and members of the working group met on June 1st, 2023. Two, the meeting focused on discussion and agreement on assumptions that are crucial to producing the final analysis. Three, NewGen is working on the final analysis for our next meeting. Four, the working group is scheduled to meet on June 30th to discuss the final analysis. And five, after the June 30th meeting and review and revisions by the working group, NewGen will prepare to discuss the results publicly with the governing bodies of each entity. Alan, you have anything to add on that?
You summed it up perfectly.
I've read it. I didn't, I didn't write this stuff. Jeff? Acting Town Manager Arata? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is any kind of a number starting to emerge, a draft number?
I can read this again, but I'm not gonna answer.
No, if that's it, that's it, then I'm, thank you very much.
Those numbers will be presented during the June 30th meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss them at that time. And as I said, the only thing we did was we focused on what items we want them to come up with the final numbers, as I said in number two. Okay? Bill? I can't answer your questions either, sorry about that.
I have no questions, I understand the input.
Okay. And my laptop's just crapped out, so I'll get it in here. Okay. We're gonna go to four, receive update from Budget Committee and provide input regarding fiscal year 2024 annual budget. Mr. Brewster and Mr. Harper.
I'll be glad to make some introductory remarks. First, we're about a month ahead in starting the budget process and the town is, I think, at the same point. And one of the things we're missing is a final valuation of property for both the town and the mud. Staff, Director of Finance and GM have pegged our increase in, in property values at about 9%. Is that correct, Alan?
As of today, yes.
And we think that's, that's going to be conservative. If, if it comes in at 11 or 12, we'll, we'll produce some extra revenue. The, the goal that we set was no rate increase for our customers. And in other words, we want to have flat year-to-year bills and, and that's, I think, an accomplishment we can, we can count on. We're proposing an increase in spending. And I'm kind of making some, some highlight comments here, Stephen. You're gonna go through detail? Okay, well, let me, let me, let me share our, our initial thinking here. We're proposing an increase in spending of around $2 million. The budget will be up around 14 million. And a large part of this is going to be capital improvement. We also see a 20% increase in, in fire services and that, a large part of that is salary increase. I think it was 195,000. We, last year, took a very aggressive approach. Think about what was going on 12 months ago. We had nine and a half percent inflation. And we were uncertain about where that number was gonna go. And so we set, we took a position of, of using that number on inflation to help with salaries and wages. And the town was a little bit more moderate. This year, we are taking a more moderate approach with salaries and wages and proposing a 3% merit increase. I think the town is gonna take a little more aggressive approach, but I, I don't want to speak for the town. Let's see. We've built up some healthy reserves and we do intend to spend down on some of those reserves in achieving our goals. Interest and sinking fund will decrease 70%, this is a highlight, due to two general obligation bonds being paid off. We don't see any, as I said earlier, any projected water, wastewater rate increases. Bank interest to us will increase by 150,000 due to interest rate increases. Cell tower revenue will increase. Staff negotiated a new deal with a subsidiary of AT&amp;T and will realize 35,000 additional dollars from that contract. Prior year reserve contribution of 1.9 million will be applied to the pump station project. The, the inter-fund transfer from South, from the Southlake Interconnect project underrun was 1.2 million and that'll, that'll help out.
Southlake?
Was it the Interconnect project?
Yeah, over by TWK.
Oh, TW, yeah.
We talked about that a few months ago.
Fire budget, as I said, that's a, there's a, there's a chunk there of 195K increase in salary proposed. And let's see, what else happened? That's, that's, those are the highlights. I think we're ready for a more detailed line-by-line review.
Just to start, what was the headcount last year versus the headcount this year?
So last year, the headcount was 17 and we're sitting at 15 this year.
Okay.
All right, so I'll get to start. Thank you, Vice President Brewster, for the summary and highlights here. I won't go over line on by line unless anybody has any specific questions or anything as we go along. We're gonna bring this back to next board meeting and go over in more detail and why, when we have more refined numbers. But just trying to give everybody an overview on what we're looking at right now. This is early projections. This is as of May's property valuations. So these will change again in June and then we'll get certified numbers from both counties in July, on July 25th. So as Vice President Brewster said, we are looking at a, oh, down here. We're looking at property valuations increasing about 9% as of right now. So this is with both counties and then what we have is the PID and then out of district, which is our gas well sites around town. That's not actually in the district itself or the PID.
Okay, I realize these are rough numbers, but the tax increases that you had in the top section there?
Yeah, we'll go right back to that.
Okay, okay.
I just want to jump on the property valuations, just gonna, yes, sir.
Real quickly, out of district and PID, property value summary, there's no change in that?
So these will be refined numbers, these, once I get better refined numbers from, these are gas well sites, there's not a lot of change in the property itself. They're not homes or anything being put on there. So usually they're pretty flat, but I normally don't take these numbers now because they really isn't, there's no review form or anything that changes. So normally I'll certify five numbers when I update this, but usually it's very, very small, minor changes if any at all.
These are gas well sites that are going into town that they're putting into homes on, right?
That is correct.
So there will be increases in the future?
In the future, that is correct.
Okay.
Typically, once the development starts and you actually have homes built, it takes about 18 months before you see the revenues.
Is there gas well sites in the PID because you have out of district in the PID?
What he's saying by that, it's out, outside of the district and outside of the PID. It's still within the town, but it's outside of the PID as well.
The town collects its tax on it, they're still outside of our district for tax valuations.
Yeah, I took it as out of the district and the PID.
Right, and the PID. All right, so we'll go back over to the property, or, I'm sorry, back up here to tax rates. So the comparison, as we know, the minimum over tax rate that we have for the district is about 90% used for the fire. The other 10% is for the district, for the non-apartmental. So we see a decrease in the non-apartmental part of here, about 11%. When the decrease as of right now for early projections for the fire tax at about 13%. Our INS has decreased significantly. We did have two GO bonds that fell off, by meaning it's been matured now and been settled out. So now we're looking at an overall tax rate about 16% decrease based on the current valuations right now. Any questions on that?
Not enough.
And once I get information in June, usually when I take preliminary numbers in June, which should be released this Friday, then I can refine this a better and we'll have a better picture of it next board meeting.
And let me go ahead and add something to, we met with staff, town staff earlier this week to talk about.
That's my laptop crapping out.
We talked about the fire budget specifically and what they plan to do with the ILA. And as previously mentioned, they're still looking at moving forward with the fire ILA next budget year. So more than likely between now and the next meeting, we'll be bringing some revised ILA documentation for you to review. But currently with the rate that it's sitting at, we're over our rollback rate and we have a $300,000 delta. So we're, we're gonna be working with staff over at the town. Once we get the final preliminary numbers in, then we're gonna reconvene and look at all of our numbers together and find out where we need to possibly use cash reserves or bring something back to you. So just want to make y'all aware of that, okay?
So the fire right now is over our rollback rate?
Currently.
Yeah, currently there's, there's about a 300,000 delta right now that puts us over the voter approved rate right now.
Okay. And our agreement says that if it stays that way, the town picks it up over our rollback rate?
That's what the ILA is correct, that's what it stated in the ILA.
Their percentage portion will share, yes.
Yep.
Do we have a breakdown of the fire?
Yes.
Okay, do you know if they're adding, I know there was talk of adding a sixth person on each shift?
As far as my understanding, that's being postponed another year.
Okay, so that does, doesn't account for the increase?
Correct, as far as my understanding, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
The salaries are based off of compensation study true-ups and a 5% cost of living adjustment.
I just want to go on record, I hate those true-ups because they're never apples to apples. That's my two cents.
We're gonna roll right into the fire budget here in a second, just wanted to try and do a, a overall summary here as far as what we're looking at. So based on the tax collection, the PID surcharges and the reserve funds being used to offset some of the expenses, as Vice President Brewster talked about, the capital outlays. So we're looking about a 296,000 surplus. We will refine this better, Alan and myself will refine this better and bring it to the next board meeting. You know, we're not looking to adopt the budget with a surplus or deficit, so once we get more refined numbers, we're gonna narrow this down. All right, so as we roll down, we'll look, take a look at the fire fund budget changes first. So most of the stuff you're gonna see change on the revenue side, that's the emergency of the PID assessment. That changes based on what is required for the revenue requirement, based on the PID valuations, and then you have the property taxes collected by the district. So as one number changes, the other number goes with it. So as we manipulate the property valuations, as we get better certified numbers, these numbers will change. All right, so we're gonna roll right into the expenses. These are the major items that are changing with the fire budget, the current fire budget right now that's proposed. Salaries is the highest percentage of this right now. Salaries, as we talked about before, this has to do with a, there was a mid-year amendment that happened for comp study that was out at the beginning of last year, or the end of last year and beginning this year. So this is part of the last part of that comp study that came out, that the town is proposing to do an increase in the salaries plus a 5% increase in merits. All right, and then we go in from here with that, you know, you have other, other personnel costs that will go up with it. Workman's comp is one of the biggest ones. I did speak with April today. And majority of this is based on salaries, but also based on rates. They were, the town has been behind in the calculation of the work comp rates in the prior years. And I think it's safe, has some true-ups that have been, some, some pretty significant true-ups over the last several years, so this is them getting a better refine on what their rate's gonna be for this year. That's why you see such a big increase, almost 200% increase for the work comp.
So the town, and I understand that they weren't paying enough in the past few years, so now it's come to pay the piper, you have to pay now?
Correct. Well, they're just refining the way they do the estimate for the future year, so there's not a big true-up later in the year. And then with salaries, part of this is also gonna be salaries, as the higher the salaries go, the more workman's comps go up. This is based on salaries. There's also increase in building maintenance, memberships in dues and capital outlays. Now, this capital outlays, actually during a meeting yesterday, is actually going to decrease a little bit. Right now, they were decreasing about 7,000 based on this number here and there's some projection that it might get refined a little bit more depending on the, the future talks over the next month. So on the district side, so these are town expenses. On the district side here, insurance is gonna go up a small percentage right now, based on the numbers I currently have in front of me now, but this will get refined over the next month. And then Alan and I have been looking in the Gatsby and right now, we just, we drained out the Gatsby reserves to replace the last fire truck that was just done this prior year. So right now, there's only 81,000 remaining in the Gatsby fund. And from my understanding, we have seven years for the next truck is gonna be replaced, at least in the replacement schedule. And we're nowhere near ready to get a truck replaced in the next seven years, so we're trying to get caught back up to be able to have the funds available for a lighter truck.
I apologize, my laptop finally came up, so I can see what I had notes. On the fire, back to the fire, it looked like there was a 22, 20 something increase in revenue, right?
So because fire is 100% covered by taxes, the revenue is, because the expenses went up, we need an increase in revenue.
And that number isn't solid yet until July. So, and there's still 300,000 in the hole?
So the, what you're seeing here, the fire, we have, we want a zero surplus or deficit budget. So when the expenses go up 300,000, the revenue has to go up the same 300,000. Because of that, that puts our requirement of our tax rate too high above the voter approved rate, which would then throw us into an election when we're over that rate.
Was the total revenue increase, is projected to increase 423, 853 or something, is that right?
Correct. We have to increase our taxes, revenue from taxes in order to offset the expenses that are required. So we have a 3.5% based on tax law, we have a 3.5% cap that we can go up with. And this will put us over that 3.5% cap by about 300,000. Now, once again, these are preliminary numbers as of May's numbers. My projection, this number is gonna get, I'm a little more conservative when it comes to property valuation and what's in the ARB right now. So these numbers, this 300,000 should decrease, I just can't tell you for sure until I get better refined numbers what that number's gonna be.
This is being driven by two things. Salary, the fact that they're doing a catch-up, which is a failure to budget and pay correctly in previous years, and the equipment, which we do need to do, set aside reserves, which we're holding Gatsby for that. So I see that, I see that part of the equation.
Well, with salary, you have benefits, so it's like hand and hand. The insurance goes up, life insurance, dental, whatever else packaged there.
I, I understand that. But it, this was, this was last year when we went through this process, we got the input from the town. The final budget late, I don't remember making earlier inputs into it, excuse me. And there was a, just a flat quote-unquote merit increase. I asked about cost of living. They didn't address cost of living, don't look at it. And so my, my position on that at that time, and has been as long as I've been on this board, is that if you're not meeting CPI, you're giving your employees a pay cut. And so.
Have to work within your means, whatever you do.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I, I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, here again, that's, that's what you have to do.
And so for the boards, you see also on the amended in 2023, this projection of 40,000, 41,000 deficit here. This is part of the mid-year amendment to cover the salary differences right now, outside of 300,000 right now.
If you, my, my thought is, is if you have your pay scale set and if you have a step increase program for a certain time period and you do CPI, you should find little need to go out and do a comparative analysis because you should stay within the band as you progress through the years. And when you go out and do that check later on in the years, you should find that you're relatively in the same place. So it's all on your approach on how you want to run your, handle your employees. Personally, I prefer to take care of my employees on a year-to-year basis and not let things slip year over year till I have a manning issue or a morale issue and then go out and say I need to do a survey to see where I'm at on my salaries. I take care of it year to year. Personal philosophy.
Mr. Chairman, did we, did we lose anybody, any employees, key employees or employees period last year?
Through retirements.
Through retirement?
Yes.
That would be normal, but.
No.
The, so the comparative study that was done, I found it, I found it useful. I haven't been on the board that long, but I enjoyed seeing where we fit compared to Grapevine, Southlake, Roanoke and several other entities around us. And I, because we're, we're trying to manage this $64 million depreciated asset and, and the people that run it, I wondered where we fit in, relative to those other entities. And it turns out that we're, we're, we're very well positioned. We're very competitive and it, it was useful information to me.
It's seven years' experience doing cost of living increases.
Yeah, well, you, you've been here, you've been here longer than I have.
CPIs, let it, you know, you'll, you'll stay in the band.
Yeah.
And everything, everybody stays happy. You take your little increases. I mean, if I have to raise water rates two cents to cover CPI, cost of doing business. And I'm sure that no customer's going out there, is gonna scream and holler about raising it, raising the water rate two cents. And I'm sure that no customer's going out there is going to scream and holler about raising, raising the water rate two cents, so.
Patrick.
Gentlemen. Thank you. It's Patrick Rata, interim town manager. So thank you, Mr. Rose, for that. When this true up was done mid-year, one of the things council directed staff to do was to come up with a plan so we never put ourselves in this situation again. So that's what I'm working with our finance director on. And I want to thank Alan and Stephen for taking the time to spend some time talking to me and, and April. We are going to work very closely with your team and get this right. But we are coming up with a plan to make sure this doesn't happen again. So right now we're, we're looking at a 5% cost of living increase, which is part merit and, and part COLA. But it may go to 6% depending on what the community does. So we are going to try to stay there and we are presenting a plan to council to make sure we never get in this situation again. Because the, the firemen, we just did a true up at our last council meeting to take care of the firemen. There were seven firemen that truly needed to be made whole. It was dramatic amount of money, as you can see. And I think they really appreciate that. And I think we just stopped one from retiring by giving them this, this money. So yes, the fire department's well off. I mean, I know we're, we're going to have some financial issues we're going to be talking about over the next couple of months, but we're going to try to get there and make this right.
I, I follow the Herb Kelher theory of management. I take care of my employees, my employees will take care of my, my customers. And so I'm not saying that I want to overpay them. I mean, I'm not trying to get everybody driving Cadillacs or not anything against Cadillacs or anything like that. I'm not trying to do that. But when you look, when you do one of these surveys and determine where your scale should be at, if you will just do CPI, that will keep you within the scale because everybody else is going to be working around that same parameter. And then within, within the skill set that you're working with, then the one we use is for every 15, 15 years, you get a, get a 3% step each year. Now, when you max out, then you're, then you're going to get the CPI. But that, when you take and put that against the big band, you're basically saying at 15 years, you will reach the top, basically the top section of that band. And in my mind, if you're getting within, I'm going to say 75 to 90% of the top of that band. You're not going to have employees jumping out the door to go someplace else if they're happy.
Right, I agree. And we're working on a similar plan. I like your idea though, because we're, we talk at 2%. So 3% looks pretty good.
Yeah.
So, but thank you. And I just wanted to, and I want to thank your staff for, for giving us the opportunity to openly communicate.
And when I talk with, I talk and I talk with some of our employees the other day, when I talk, I talk CPI. Because CPI, cost of living, is something they understand every time they go to the grocery store. And I said, if we look at that CPI and we give you, that, that's, I'm not cutting your salary. I'm not cutting your buying, your buying capability. When I sit at this desk, I'm not going to make you wealthy, but I'm not going to cut your buying capability. I'm going to look at that CPI and it's going to be up to you to make it work. But that's, that's my support for my employees.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Was there any other questions on the fire budget? Or would you like to move on to the general fund?
You can move on.
Alright.
Alright, we'll start with the revenue, the big picture item, the big changes in the revenue side. Water, we are projecting based on just the, the 18-year average that I use. We're projecting a little bit more of an increase in water sales for next year. This has to do with consumption.
You say 18-year average?
10-year.
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 Thank you.
I used 10.
I've been pushing that a little bit.
The 10-year average, so we're looking a little bit increased, not as much as last year. Last year was a very significant amount of consumption, one of the, one of the most water sales we've had in prior years of history. But we are looking at it and we're trying to be a little more refined and show a little tour of the actual revenue that comes in throughout the year.
Yeah.
You'll see a difference in penalties here. This has to do with a couple of different factors. One is increased water bills. The average water bill is increasing a little bit due to rate increase and consumption use, which we still have the same amount of customers that would be late. And so that it is a little bit increased just based on that percentage. Interest income, as everyone's probably seen with the bank, interest rates have gone back to where they were pre-COVID, which is great. Now that we're in this post-COVID world here. So what we're definitely seeing a lot higher intake than we did in the last couple of years since COVID happened. Cell tower, Mr. General Manager over there did a great job with the cell tower contract here. And this is our new rate that we're seeing here in front of us. And definitely want to reflect that and give kudos to that.
That, that was the agreement with the cell company that we reached before, right? That had the accelerators in it.
Yes.
3% and November takes effect.
Okay.
Every year.
Well done.
Good job, Alan.
This is, this is the matchup because last year when we did the budget, we, the contract was still the old prior contract. So this took effect in November. So this is reflecting the new contract and the increase of 3%. Alright, so the two items you see here is prior year reserves and transfer, interfund transfer. These are really offsetting revenues. They're not exactly revenues that's coming in from a customer. These are coming in from reserves. And as Vice President Brewster talked about, this 1.1 is coming in from a construction fund, bond reserves that are now finished up and we transferred over.
Okay, my understanding, because I spoke with Alan on that, my understanding is this was the water line that we ran out to the East Tank.
That's correct.
And that there was some savings on that.
Waterline interconnect project.
I'm sorry?
The waterline interconnect project, yes. That's correct.
Be the, the last series bond that we went out for, the revenue bond that we went out for in the bond proceeds, plus interest.
And we can use that for.
Waterline improvements.
Because we did that, it was, it was a joint, the bond was like water line and wastewater treatment plant or something. It was a.
That is correct.
Correct. And the proportional share that we're using, we can utilize towards water line improvements.
Great, great. I'm frankly surprised that that number's that big. I just, it's because I don't, what was that project? Was it a 4 million project or something?
Well, here, you have to remember too, that this included engineering and property acquisition. There was a lot of money built into engineering on this that we utilized staff and myself and walked them through a lot of process and we saved a significant amount of money right there.
So you covered your salary again?
A few times.
Okay.
Okay. Multiple, multiple years, let me say it that way.
Just give it to you in one, something.
I remember having a discussion back when I was on town council years ago about whether, you know, whether I could pay people or reimburse people for outstanding performance, you know, like in this case, 1.1 million dollar savings in a project through outstanding staff work. The answer was no. I'm sorry.
Go back to the rate payer somehow.
The, the mud, at least in the past few years, I mean, they've been proactive. I mean, Stephen has done an exceptional job. Alan and Mike and, you know, Lori and other, even the workers. And they always look to, you know, cut costs and keep the quality up. So, I mean, you have to applaud them. We go from 17 to 15, still do an exceptional job. So we lowered, you know, and a lot of it's through technology and new technology. But still, and you can be, okay, we had 17, let's go to 19 and have more people walking around not doing anything, you know?
In the old days, it was what, 21? I think, I remember 21 as a number.
There's 21.
22 when I started.
22 when you started?
We had a water, wastewater treatment plant that, you know, you had to do all these tests and stuff. And with technology, with all the monitoring systems being upgraded and we do use outside contractor to do some things too. But still, I mean, overall, I think the mud staff has done an exceptional job, is looking for cost savings here and there, so.
It's impressive to run the size of an operation with 15 people.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Yeah.
And we'll, I mean, hopefully when the numbers come out on a, a study, it'll show that.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on the revenue side?
No.
Tired of just patting you on the back.
My comment about reserves, my comment on using the reserves is we have those reserves so that they can be used. And that's, that's part of the, you know, we do pay as, pay as you go. But here again, that's putting money away so that you can pay as you go and not have to go out and get a bond for $2 million.
And remember that we're taking that into account as we're projecting out five years. So when we bring this budget back, Stephen and I are projecting out five years to know what that looks like. So we can use that CIP and water line replacement as generally our buffer, up or down.
Another thing I'd like to mention while we're talking about those reserves and using those reserves. To this point, as long we've had the reserve policy, we've never had to take, set money aside in the budget as a, an item to be billed to generate reserves. And so as, as long as we continue to, to plan conservative and generate a little bit of revenue, we'll still be able to add those monies into the reserve bucket, those at the end of the year when we look at it. We'll still be able to add some monies in, especially in years when we, it's dry and we sell a lot of water. We'd be able to add those in. So, but just to put in the back of your mind, there may come a point in the future where we need to say, alright, we're going to need to start funding into that reserve like we fund the fire department for the fire truck.
Well, we already have that in place, but that's in Gatsby 54.
Yeah.
We have the majority of our major Gatsby taken care of in that. It's this major water line replacement and things that are linear assets, if you will, are what we're projecting out.
Yep, got it.
And before the next, when we meet with the budget committee again, we're going to go into the reserve policy a little bit more so we can see what the numbers look like after utilizing some of these reserves and what, if any, is going to be remaining and how we think it might be best to modify or tweak the reserve policy a little bit. So we're going to have that discussion with them to see what their input is and bring it back to you all next month. That's the intention.
Okay, where are we at, Stephen? Move on.
Alright, we're moving on to the water expenses here. So we're going to hit a few of the bigger items here for the key changes. So a couple of things you're going to see on here, there are some increases in salaries. You are going to see increase in medical insurance. I do want to briefly touch about this one. You don't see this significant increase in the other two departments. Reason why is every year employees have the option to, based on their qualifying ability to choose what insurance plan, whether it's family, spouse or employee only. We did have some changes that changed in January when we created the new, new benefit plan, where elections were changed. So one might have been from employee to a family or it might have went from employee to a spouse. So because of that, it did change, it changes the overall projection. So every year I take a snapshot of where we are during the time of the budget. And that's what I predict what we're going to be next year based on if nobody changes our elections.
Well, last, go ahead.
I was going to, if you want to finish up medical, go ahead. I want to step back to salaries.
Okay, on the health plan, last year we budgeted and that's kind of hard to predict because we don't do the health until January. And then we budget the money last year. Well, we have some money left over, we can lower it down to what, 3,000 employee deductible?
Yeah, we changed it.
Is that right? And we ended up spending an additional like, what, 30 something thousand, was it?
Started off, we started off, we didn't spend as much as we thought we were going to.
How much did we spend extra? We had to throw money into it.
Correct. So to keep the same plan, I thought we had 70,000 difference and we wound up cutting that in half to 30 something thousand with going to the new Blue Cross Blue Shield plan that we currently have now.
I thought it was 30,000. Okay, so we, you know, we had over budgeted for the plan and the breaks went down or whatever happened. So we actually bought down to a lower deductible.
That's correct.
And different buy-ins or something. So, you know, you can budget and say, oh, look, we have money left over. Let's get good, good projections on health plans now. They aren't going to be the same in January, but at least we can get, okay, here's what the plans are to support these numbers.
Correct. And we're, we're still refining that now. It is really early, insurance companies are quite interesting and they don't want to give you more than 60 days out. They don't want you to shop around their rates.
Yeah, and the rates aren't going to hold for six months. But at least we can see what they are. And it goes back to the salary. Hey, I want to pay the people as much as you want, but you have to consider, okay, now you have benefits. The benefits are what kill you. It's not the salary, it's the benefits. So if you have a person making 50, 60 or 100,000, then you're going to pay them another 20 or 30,000. So really their package deal is that benefits and the salary. Where you go somewhere else, another city and you do comparative plan, you don't always consider, okay, what benefits do they have? What do their employees have to pay in? Because some employees in cities have to pay a percent in. So it varies. You have to level, keep the playing field level and put the whole package. But salary, salary is nothing. It's the benefits that kill you in addition to it.
Now, I do want to, so we kind of take, let's take a look real quick while we're on the benefit, just so we can look at the other departments. Like I do want to show that and we'll get back to the salaries here, Director Rose. So if you look at, if you look at the medical here, where we do have an increase here for the medical side on the water. But if you do go down to medical for wastewater and then down to admin, you see that's a lot lower increase on there. It's pretty relatively flat. So a lot of this is, and once again, this is early projections. I'm still working with a broker to get a little more refined rates. So that I do predict they're going to go down more than what we're showing here now once we get a little more of the experiences that comes in over this year. But what we're seeing really is more of changing of election than it is increasing of the plan itself. So we do the best we can to predict what we think are, you know, all employees that we have and what plan they're going to be on. As you imagine, with 15 staff, you get one person changing from employee only to employee family. It does make a significant change in the budget overall when it comes to these, these items here for this line item. Director Rose, go back to the salary.
Back to wait, back to salary and wages. You've heard me speak on the fire department side of the equation. I, like I said, been doing this for seven years and brought CPI in. And we've always used the CPI as well as the step, step, step system. And I'd like to see that continue. I expect, I expect it to continue. I have no interest in putting anything out across this dais that would indicate to an employee that I'm giving him a wage cut. And when I look at a salary and it doesn't talk CPI, doesn't meet CPI.
Can I get a dollar every time you mention CPI?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me just take out my wallet. I can give you a couple hundred here.
Yeah.
But the point is, that's a critical item. The CPI needs to be in there. We talked about it last year, named an agreement that the CPI was in state as well as the steps. I expect that same thought process to continue through this budget.
Got that, Stephen? CPI, CPI, CPI.
And, and I think you said it was, we, it's not just some big CPI for the US. It's detailed for here, we use the CPI regional DFW.
That's correct.
And, and we talked about it, used May last year. They do it every, it alternates yearly. So it's, we're going to pick up the June CPI this year because they didn't put down a May one.
It's technically May, but it's published in June, yeah.
Okay, so, but that's where we're at. I don't know what that number is. I'm comfortable it's going to be a significantly lower number than it once was last year.
That's correct.
But.
Stephen, what's the number? You know the number.
4.7.
And what's that total dollar amount difference that we figured?
Roughly 75,000 across the board with all benefits and everything rolled up.
All, that includes the benefits and everything?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Roughly.
That's what I like about him, and he just rattles those.
Yeah, yeah, it's a penny for $10,000.
So while we're on that topic, this is partial input here. So from a board's perspective, when we go back to meet with the budget committee members, are we including CPI and merits for those that qualify? Or what do you all want us to do as far as in putting that in the budget? We need that direction.
My vote is they both go in.
That's mine too.
Okay.
Hey, don't want to hear that la, 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 la. You just wait till you see the numbers, then you can vote and.
Well, and essentially, I guess, that it's currently sitting and they have 3% for everyone. This would essentially provide 4.7 for everyone unless you're capped. If you're not capped and you have a merit within the pay scale, you would get the 4.7 plus a 3%.
Since you brought that up, Alan, I talked to you about this before and we're a board so it can vote. But I've, I've managed a lot of people. There's people that are just meet the minimum. There's people, and I'm going to use Stephen as an example. There's people that exceed way above everybody else. And you shouldn't just do 3% across the board because that tells the person that just meets minimum, hey, you know, I can skate along and still get 3%. You should give, you should give Alan, say, okay, if it's 5%, give him 5%. Alan, you know, the people, the supervisors, they can divvy it up on maybe give a person two, maybe give a Stephen. two, maybe give a Steven person six or seven. I've always lived by that because you reward the people for the job they do, not just give everyone, you know, across the board, three percent. That's my two cents.
I understand where you're coming from.
Sorry to use there.
I do have to say that our staff does exceed, and we are, we are very refined at fifteen, fifteen people here. I mean, I can stand behind all of our staff there, and they, they all do a great job of what we're doing.
When you have fifteen people, come on, you, you know them pretty good, and I agree, the majority, probably all the people are good. And that's Alan's decision though, to say, everybody gets four percent, five percent, whatever it comes out to. He may elect to that, but he might see someone go, well, you know, this person went above and beyond, you know, in the last year or something, so give him a point, you know, a percent above or something.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I have, I have a problem with that because the person with the brownest nose gets the biggest pay raise.
No, that's not true, when you've got a board that controls it either.
And I always, always use this as an example, when you're looking at governmental financing and, and human resources from a perspective, we're doing this standard the same as I've seen it done in two, three other entities where I've worked.
Yeah.
So this is not an uncommon method. We typically have a step range and it's typically fifteen. Sometimes your civil service goes down to seven or five, it just depends on the position. So you do the compensation studies, which we do a review annually to make sure that our midpoint is at or above the range. Currently, as we sit, based off of this year's study, we're sitting about seventy-five percent for the majority of our staff. Our entry level field workers are closer to ninety percent, ninety-five percent. So we're paying our staff well. Now, the three percent annual is based on giving them an incentive for being here. When you start in, if you start out at wrong one, you know that you have fifteen years worth of growth in your salary, okay? It's hard to see how someone, Kevin and I, we've discussed this before, how is this guy taking water samples better than this guy? It's very hard to outpace or outperform when everybody's doing the same job consistently. We're on a rotation basis and it's very hard to outperform. So that's why you have the three percent, is to keep people coming to work, is to keep people on staff, is to give them that additional motivation you need, because in governmental jobs, it's very hard to do that sometimes. So just wanted to make sure y'all knew that.
I, I have my military background to refer to, and it's the same as, be these GS employees, where you have a GS three or a GS twelve, and they're going to have steps. Your GS twelve and so many, you know, with so many years, and each year you're going to get a, there's a little bump. Second Lieutenant gets a little bump every year, or First Lieutenant, little bump, but then on top of that, you get a cost of living.
Correct, and that adjusts your entire range to make sure that you're with the market.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I remember a time I got a cost of living increase and it cost me because my taxes went up. I got made less money, but that's a personal problem.
And that's a good, good comparison, because we know the military is so efficiently run, right?
I was underpaid.
So going back to.
I got made four hundred and twenty-eight dollars when I first entered the military. That's crazy.
So going back to seeking direction on that, when we meet with the budget committee and populating this budget, are we doing CPI and merit for those that qualify? How all would, how would you like us to proceed? I request y'all.
It's up to these two guys to bring it back to us.
Very well.
I'm not.
We'll revisit.
Okay. Director Harper's already spoken that he's in favor of that. I, I think with additional consideration, I want, I want to think about it.
Understood.
But if we err, I want to err in favor of the employee, and that's the position we took last year when we were talking about CPI and whether it ought to be nine and a half or, or, or lower than that.
Understood.
And we, we took the more aggressive position, and, and we'll continue to do that, I think. If we make any errors at all, it should be in favor of the employees.
As long as we do the CPI and the steps, I'm good.
All right. For the direction. Hey, can you hit water and admin real high, quickly, please?
Sure can. We'll finish our, we'll roll up water here, so wholesale water, that's our next big item here. Wholesale water is based on what we think the consumption is going to be for next year. We're actually seeing what's possibly a little bit of slight decrease in the actual cost, but based on consumption, it's going to be a small increase overall. And then the bigger items we're going to see from both water and wastewater is going to be capital outlays. Well, we'll bring that to the board next month here and show more details on these line there and what they, what we have there, but for the most part, you're going to see the big capital outlay change and then how proactive we are on the water line replacement and the wastewater line.
And going into next year's budget, you should see the CIP or the capital projects and wastewater decrease significantly as well. That's, that's the intent, unless we find something this year that's extraneous that we're not anticipating, but based off of what's being done right now, we have heard that there isn't anything major that needs to, that's going to take a lot of extra additional cash.
We're not going to redo the water, the water plant again after we redo it this time, right?
No, the, the next phases of that will be paid from Gatsby funding.
Okay.
So your motor replacements, those pumping motors, those will be your next big ticket items. And if the VFD should be fine, we may have to replace some of the electric gear, but we're talking ten years down the road, I think, the last time I looked at the schedule, ten or, ten or twelve years before we have to replace the next large pump.
Just to, you know, just to kill a couple of seconds to make you aware of what, why I'm talking about the water plant. We had a little leak over in the, by the sidewalk at the water plant, a little water coming up out of the ground. Not a lot, just a little damp. And Alan says, we need to take a look at that, and the guy's kind of, ah, it's, it, you know, it's really nothing big. Alan says, no, no, I think we need to dig it up and see where that's coming from. So they start digging, found out it was not coming from right there, it was coming from a ways away. And it turned out to be, what was the diameter of that pipe?
It's our thirty inch. Actually, that was a twenty-four, it was a piece of his twenty-four inches concrete steel pipe.
Twenty-four inch pipe. But the problem with that little piece of twenty-four inch pipe is it was critical. If you wanted to take out the water plant, you take out that twenty-four inch piece of pipe and the water's going nowhere but out, can't put it anyplace else. It was a critical, and it's my perspective, a design error, that it was set up that way and the new system is going to be split so we can, we have that problem again, they can run water down a different line. And, I mean, that, I looked at that and that was, that was not good, not good.
And when we bring that to, for approval, I'm going to have some sheets and, and I might actually bring the design engineer and let him explain it. He does a great job of what we did on the design to make sure that I have redundancy built in, not only in our pumping, but our manifold setup as well, so I can divert water whichever way I need to.
Another excellent catch.
Steven, on, on some of these things on the wastewater, like the, I mean, everything is going up, so you have lab analysis costs, but you only went up, you know, like twelve percent.
Correct.
You feel comfortable on that one?
Yes, so we looked at that, there's going to be just a small increase for the lab fees and for what they have to do to keep up, but we do feel comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Based on what we're seeing.
We've been doing a lot of training with our supervisors, both water and wastewater this year, to help them track their budgets, look inside of their budgets and, and start projecting a little bit more refined, so these are very, very tight, and I have a feeling next year they're going to be even tighter.
Okay, because we spend a lot of money on testing.
We do, and this, this accommodates for that.
And it's required, it's required, but I mean.
Because, I mean, the chemical prices went up for the water quite a bit, and I could see that, everything is going up, and that's why I questioned the analysis side of it.
Yeah.
And we'll move on to the generated maintenance repairs, that's adding more generators to it, so we'll, like I said, we'll go in more detail about all this in the next, next month's board meeting here. And then we'll move down to the admin side. One of the bigger items we're going to see down here is the bank service charges and fees. This is one of those double-edged swords. We have a great utility billing system now, we have more customers starting to utilize it, pay online, which is great. With that becomes more fees and costs to have that, that service provider. So these are, these are fees that the Mud absorbs, so we're going and showing a true cost and what they're going to be for next year.
And who, who is it that does the collections right now?
So this is actually for the, this is for Tyler, so Tyler's our other, Tyler pays, what they call it. So it's our utility billing software, our financial software, they have a section on there for credit card processing. So we have that, plus we have Chase, which is our bank that's attached with that also. And so there's, there's fees on both sides as, as normal when it comes to these things. But we are seeing a higher increase of dollar amount being utilized in online payments, which means the fees are all based on percentages of credit cards or.
Is that industry-wide that you're seeing that?
Yes.
Or just would these come?
So, well, it's not, so the fee percentage is about the same industry, across the board as it been, but we're having a higher dollar amount being utilized as the customers.
Right.
So if their bill is going up, it's the same fee, being, the same percentage is being charged, a higher bill, which means we pay more fees.
Approximately, what is that percentage?
It, it varies with every card. So every card does, like, if you have American Express versus the Visa, MasterCard is different, plus you have a per transaction, so there's a dollar twenty-five per transaction, flat fee, that's through Tyler, the rest of it's to the banking side, and those are based on percentages. We get discounts being a government entity, so there's, there's a big calculation on each credit card transaction that comes across with that.
What's the difference between direct deposits or drafts versus the credit cards?
So it depends what they get, so if it's ACH, meaning it's just going through the bank account to bank account, then it's just a dollar twenty-five per transaction. But if they pay with a debit card, it's got a MasterCard or a Visa on there, then we pay the one twenty-five transaction plus the percentage of whatever card that is. Yes.
Since my wife is still writing checks for the Mud bill, can I get a percentage discount of a buck twenty-five plus five percent on my water bill?
Bring cash up here.
Actually, it takes more soft cost time to process that paper check, sir.
There, there is some staff time to, to process every check that comes in, and we still get a lot of check in, and we get a few hand payments still that comes in, so there's a cost for that.
I just couldn't resist.
And then we are adding the elections back in for this year, because there will be a board election on this future year here. All right, that is the high level, both non-departmental and board director's expenses are flat, relatively flat on what we have here. So we are looking at right now roughly about two hundred and ninety thousand surplus, and then we do have a projection for the year of about two ninety, is what I'm looking at so far this year. Not going to be as good as it was last year unless it just gets, water sales starts to pick up in the next couple of months, but we're looking about, roughly about three hundred thousand surplus in the year.
Okay.
As projection, early projections.
And only get to move that once a year. We did it last year.
We did it last year towards the end, that's correct.
Okay.
So usually, like, for instance, last year, you know, we have a pretty good number of what it's going to be, but then we get the odd that comes in, once we find what the final number is, and then we move it from there.
Yep.
But we are looking, Alan and I have been working on this a lot, you know, been working on this pretty sensitively now, trying to understand the next five years, what are we going to need to put in as far as contributions, and these surpluses each year can go towards that. That way it's basically a built-in rate stabilization in, in a way.
Good.
At you, on elections, okay, you had, last year you didn't have any fee in election, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then this year you're going to have ten thousand dollars, right?
That's correct.
So how's that a zero percent change?
Because there was nothing last year.
So it would be.
There's no real percentage there. You go from zero dollars to ten thousand.
It'd be an increase this year then?
Infinite increase.
It's an increase, but it's, it's not a percentage.
It's infinite.
I mean, technically it would come out in a, you know, error code right there, but zero looks better than an error code.
Yes, okay.
I can make it blank next time, if that's, is easier, but.
Yeah, I just want to note that the board expenses were the least amount in that whole budget, probably.
Now, need to get, need to be going back to AWBD, board meetings down there.
They're up here.
Yeah, they're up here. Yeah, I didn't go this time, and it's close.
Like watching paint dry, though.
It's in Corpus Christi this weekend.
I know.
This weekend?
Yeah. You going?
Yes.
Good deal.
Thank you, Steven. No further questions? Go.
Thank you, Steven.
Okay, thanks a lot, Steven, on that.
We need to designate you to vote. You're going to where they're doing the voting.
Okay, moving on, that was agenda item number four. I, I don't think we have anything for executive session, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we can skip over five in five A. There's regular session, consider an act on executive session, we can skip that one. So we're on number seven, items for future agenda. Obviously, we want to have the committee, Chris, in here, so put, put that on there for pretty much a fair amount of time, so. You have anything, Bill?
We're going to have that fire ILA for discussion.
That's the intention. Patrick and I were just discussing before the meeting, there's potential changes that need to be made to the ILA.
Internally?
Between legal counsel comments, so they have it now, reviewing it, their legal counselor is reviewing it. Soon as we get that, we'll send it over to Emily.
Okay.
To provide any other comment.